We called a meeting to order for the regular board meeting and budget hearing. And we want to make sure that everybody knows that everything was properly done according to what our rules and regulations are. So notice was given that the Nacogdoches County Hospital District will hold a public hearing on its proposed budget for the fiscal year 2020, which is July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. On June 25th, 2019 at 5:00 PM in the Auxiliary Conference Center, 1204 Mounds Street. This hearing will be part of the June 2019 regularly scheduled board meeting. And we will start off with approval of the minutes. Board has had a chance to take a look at the minutes. Erin Mu, and Patrick Second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Thank you very much. Okay, Citizens Communications, we did not have anyone that signed in to speak. So we will move on to the WOW moment of the month. So it's my honor to present the WOW recipients for the month of June 2019. And I don't think I can say it any better than the submission letter that was sent to our WOW committee did. So I'll just read that to y'all. Says, "We recently had a pediatric patient undergoing an outpatient surgical procedure who tried to become upset with having to wait and ended up leaving the family without transportation home. The patient's mother was understandably very upset, not knowing how she and her two children were going to get home once they had been discharged. It was then that three of our surgical team members, Betty Williams, Tashandra Tatum, and Tina Christopher sprang into action. Tina said, 'I just saw a mother in need.' Tina reassured the mother that they would take care of them. They helped the mother to calm herself, and I need calming, I don't like being in front of people. They helped the mother to calm herself and focus on her child that had had the procedure and was slow to coming out of anesthesia. They provided support, encouragement, and refreshments to the family while waiting in the surgery center lobby. Ms. Betty volunteered to drive the family home when she got off duty. Tashandra also volunteered to take the family home as she would be available before Ms. Betty shifted in there. Ultimately, the family arrived home safe and sound due to the actions of these three special ladies. Tina, Betty, and Tashandra made sure the mother, patient, and sibling were taken care of the entire time. This is what it means to put the patient first and provide health care to our community in a caring way. I was so proud to witness this situation and our team members exhibiting such kindness and compassion. They did not know this family, but they treated them like they were their own. This is just another example of our team coming together with one goal, and that is taking excellent care of our patients." (APPLAUSE). Ms. Christopher, Ms. Tatum, Ms. please. Congratulations on the award. These awards are wonderful, wonderful to hear about what our staff is doing and wonderful that they care so much about our patients. The next award is Special Staff Recognition by the Board for a Job Well Done. James?
I'm actually a little excited I got to do this tonight because I know this individual real well, but I do remember learning some things from him way back when I was an aide. So it's actually a lot of fun to do this. Call number one can be a terrifying experience. Often, this is when people are at their worst and most vulnerable. Nat County EMS understands this and tries very hard to help their patients navigate this scary foreign path. This is especially true if you happen to get Tony Mendez dispatched to your call. Tony has been a paramedic with Nat County EMS for over 22 years. Tony exemplifies the quality of promoted Nacogdoches Memorial Hospital. He puts his patients first, cares for all people with compassion, dignity, and respect. He has proven himself to be a leader among his peers and is someone others go to as a resource. He has mentored numerous EMS personnel throughout his years. He sets an example of how care should be delivered and how to be a team player, both in EMS and within the hospital and community. Tony is an excellent paramedic and teacher to many and a friend to all. Thank you, Tony, for dedicating your career to Nat County EMS and the patients you serve. You are truly appreciated. (APPLAUSE).
We appreciate that. Okay, medical staff report.
Good morning, President. So I'm getting in for office meeting this afternoon. This is the correctional meeting, committee 14 to 2019, and the next committee meeting Tuesday, May 20, 2019. I think the relevant part on which we want to be on board has been submitted before. And the next part is the reappointment committee, which are four or not renewing the providers at Nat County. I think everybody has pushed out. The first section, there are six reappointments, and two MBS and the resisting physician assistants that have been reappointed. And there are two withdrawals. And the new ones that are actually fewer also that have been here. Dr. Thomas is the hospital that is supposed to be leaving us, actually extended this contract for one more month until we find another full-time hospital. And two providers are not renewing their appointments, and there's one that says, "Dr. Dick out," and the second one is the physician assistant is still on. So the reappointments, once more, op-ability physician assistant, Ashana Blackton, certified as in the middle of Aurora Show, and op-ability project James Horace as a new appointment. And the new appointment is in the Anna Lee of Thermology. And people are not withdrawing, and people are not renewing until we find the providers. Ashley Taylor, which is a dental assistant, and Audrey Johnson, and Dr. Thomas, who's going to be reappointed just for a month because you're supposed to be leaving us, but they extended this contract for one more month until we find a full-time hospital. Anything else?
Thank you. Need a motion for approval?
Motion, second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the medical staff report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Principal Road Investments presentation.
All right. We have asked Horace and Adeline Mass to present an opportunity on raising capital funds to the board consideration, and this is an educational presentation to talk about the economic opportunities of them. And they're not brothers, they're cousins.
And this is also our other partner, Mark Lowry, who's in Lufkin. In Lufkin, it helps us with everything that we need to do in Angelina County as far as opportunity funds and zones. So just a brief background, Horace and I and Mark, we're both, we're all from Nacogdoches and Angelina Counties. Horace runs Mass Motorsports and Mass Power Train. We were at Netco meeting a couple of months ago when we met Gary and Rhonda and told them a little bit about what we were doing and what we've been working on, which is a new program. And it started, if you could just go to the next page, please. So opportunity funds and zones, what are they and how they can benefit Memorial Hospital and Nacogdoches in general? 2017, the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act passed not only a lot of other different things, but one of them was an opportunity fund in zones. So essentially, what an opportunity zone is, is each state was able to designate low-income and distressed communities and designated these for possible new developments. Alternative vehicle for businesses to raise money, so for businesses that operate in these designated zones, which tend to be low-income areas, instead of going to a bank or private equity, they have this other vehicle, which is, but they have to be in an opportunity zone. And there's lots of regulations for them to qualify for this type of capital. So states designate an opportunity zone, so it has to be national, it's, the money can't come from this for opportunity zones. And then in April 2019, so it came out in 2017, but there was a lot of questions that the IRS did not answer. And then in April, we went to Vegas for the updated regulations. And they're still coming out with new regulations, but pretty much what most people we talked to, lawyers and accountants, they said that at this moment, most of the funds are already, they're already looking for projects. So let's get into exactly like how this can help. So the funds, the money, has to be a capital gain. So it has to be, you know, some type of asset that is sold after 2017, and they have 180 days in order to opt to designate it or put it in what's called an opportunity fund. So the investors, they decide to sell a business or an asset, they have some type of gain, they put that gain in what's called a qualified opportunity fund, which can also act as a business. Then, in order for them to get their benefit, which we'll get into a little bit later, the fund has to, there's a few options that they can do, but they essentially have to invest.
Qualified opportunity zone business, or be the business themselves and operate in what's called a zone. So let's go to the next slide, please. So this is a general map of all of the opportunity zones. So every state has some. Each governor, so it wasn't a federal thing that they decided in Congress or in the Senate, it was each governor of each state, they decided which areas are going to qualify. And then we'll go to the next state, next slide. So there's Texas, and if you can see, you know, East Texas has a lot. And there's Nacogdoches. So it's all of the, essentially, that's North Street right in the middle, so all of downtown. We are currently in an opportunity zone. Everything to Angelina County, and then Lufkin has a little bit to the northeast. But essentially, southwest and southeast are all in an opportunity zone, so that means any business that wants to raise money, they can raise money through a fund. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So if you're an investor, what essentially, why, why are we even talking about this? What's the benefit? So it's very particular to investors that have large capital gains, so they either sell a business, sell a piece of land, sell a large, you know, stock. And then, once they sell that, they have 180 days to, for them to qualify to put it into a fund, okay? So let's say I, for an example, I buy a housing apartment complex for a million dollars five years ago. Yesterday, I sell that for $2 million, and then I have a million-dollar gain. So the IRS is going to knock on my door and they say, "Excuse me, sir, we would like our taxes. But if you don't want to pay me now, you can opt for this new program." And what does that mean? So I give them a million dollars, I keep my million-dollar basis, I keep that. And I give the fund, not the government, the opportunity fund, a million dollars. So I keep my million, I don't pay taxes on the million that I give. Then the fund has special things that it has to do in order for me to get my benefits. So the fund, so the fund, the money's in the fund, the fund then, I leave it in there for five years, and I say, "Hey, excuse me, I would like my money back." The fund says, "Okay," they talk to the business or wherever the investment is, they give me my money back. The IRS says, "Okay, you, thank you for participating in this program. Now you have to pay taxes only on $900,000." So it's a 10%, so the basis goes up, 10% reduction in taxes essentially. If I leave it in there for seven years, the million dollars, still a million dollars that I get, but I only pay taxes on $850,000, okay? And then the, the big benefit to this is if I hold it, and it's a long-term hold, so it's only a particular type of investor that's interested in this type of thing. If I leave my money, the million dollars, in the fund for 10 years, and then the business gives me my money back, I already, I'm only paying taxes on the $850,000, but let's say that million dollars was a 10% stake, you know, of a company, a 20% stake of. Now is worth $10 million. So that 20%, it was a million, now it's 2 million. So in 10 years, I've gained another million on top of my million, and I don't pay any taxes on that million dollars. That's after 10 years. So that's the, that's the biggest benefit. Also, it just defers taxes, so, which is very advantageous for a lot of investors. And then investing in 2019, I just added this little moment, this whole thing, because the investors are incentivized to invest now in this year because they get the 15%. If they invest in 2020, it's not seven years to 2026. So in 2026, no matter if you're going to leave your money in there for five, seven, 10 years, IRS is going to collect those taxes. Next slide, please. This is just the same example that I did, we'll go to the next slide. And then, real quick, I know I'm probably losing some interest. The QOF, 90%, 90% of its assets, this is for the business, okay? So the fund now has the money, the investor sits back, and they're just waiting. They can be involved if they want, that depends. 90% of the money in the fund has to be in, in one of those zones, and so the business operates in the zone, okay? And then for a qualified opportunity zone business, QOZB, this is for a business that the money is buying in. So not, the fund isn't running the business, this is, "Hey, I've got money, you need money, here's some of this money, and then I'm going to buy a percentage of that." So the qualified business, it can be anything, it can sell chairs, it can sell beer, it can sell anything, it doesn't have to be, you know, there's, there's no, it can be real estate, doesn't matter. And then it has to qualify for the business, it has to have a couple of things. So 50% of the gross income must be derived from the business. So you can't have, let's say you have a chain, and 10 of your restaurants are not in the zone, but one of your restaurants is in the zone, you're not going to qualify, you're not going to be able to receive that money. So the majority of your assets have to be, and they're, and the IRS is going to check this every six months. And if they're not, and then you'll, the fund will be penalized. Okay? And then this isn't that important, less than 5% of the aggregate adjusted basis of the property of the trader business attributable to non-qualified financial property, so that's essentially just saying, it has to be physical assets, you can't just, you can't just put money in the fund, and the, the business can't just hold on to the money. It's got a, it's, the entire program is essentially trying to move capital from wealthy areas into distressed properties. And it gives them benefits by doing that, but it also allows businesses another vehicle, another way to raise money. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, these are just for the business, these are kind of, you know, because people, what I found out in Vegas is, is businesses and real estate, they're trying to find loopholes. And the IRS is saying, you know, "Look, it has to be done for the good, for right purposes. It's supposed to be done for communities that are distressed, that are in need." So the money has to be put, you know, build things, improve the areas. And so, you know, at least 50% of the employees have to be in the zone, 50% of the gross income has to be derived from that area. You can't just have a satellite, you know, you can't just buy a piece of land, put like a hot dog stand on it, and then, you know, you can't do that. Next slide, please. So how does this affect y'all at all? Why are, why am I even up here? The hospital is in a zone. We're currently in the zone. We talked to Rhonda and Gary, and essentially, they said that there's, you know, the old wing is not, not being used to maximum capacity. Well, because real estate is a very easy way for investors that are looking for this type of program and to, a place to hold their money for 10 years, a possible, there's a couple scenarios, but the easiest, the fastest, is the hospital would sell the wing to an opportunity fund, okay? They've got money ready to invest in a business or a place that's in the zone. It has to, in order for them to qualify, they have to improve it by double, okay? So let's say they buy the, the wing for $5 million. In order for the investors to get their advantages, they have to put at least another five into the hospital. Otherwise, they don't get their advan, they, after 10 years, they're disqualified. And so essentially, the hospital would sell the piece of land to the fund, the fund would then use their, use, it's essentially a business, renovate the spaces. And we talked to, you know, Gary and Rhonda, we've all had discussions about essentially what Nacogdoches needs as far as healthcare services, and, you know, essentially, they would put those type of businesses in the wing. And then the hospital would then lease it from the fund for a lease-to-purchase. Essentially, because the fund, the, the investors don't want to own the building after 10 years, they want, they want to get out. And so they would lease, do a lease-to-purchase. That's the first scenario. We'll go to the.
Let me add some more detail.
Yeah.
So this is something that the, that the hospital's actually done several times over the past several years. The building just across the street was a lease, was a, was a sell and was, was leased, not across the street, but right, right south, south of here. So it's, it's a good way to raise capital outside while still maintaining control of what goes on there. And so what we're looking for is creative ways to bring outside capital to reinvest into the hospital, to help with the finances of, of the hospital, but still also adding an additional business by renovating that for other, other use. So it has multi-benefits. One, there's all this money that needs to be put to use. Two, you have underutilized facilities that really require some renovation that the hospital doesn't have the money to do. And three, there's other services that I'm sure you would like to bring in, that you certainly don't have the ability to bring in with the capital at hand. So it does all three of those things while also allowing the hospital to make decisions on, on what that new potential business or services could be in the industry while bringing in outside money to, to do so. So it's a very unique structure, and it has a very strong benefit to the investor. So I just wanted to make it clear, like, this is not something where you're going to give part of the hospital away to do something that you don't control or understand or want. This is just meant to be a, a whole vehicle for multilayer to potentially, you know, convince some outside investors that there's some business and services the hospital could add that'd be a net benefit that they couldn't do without, you know, private investment. You want to go to the next?
Yeah, yeah. All right, next slide, please. So, very similar, hospital sells the old wing to a fund, just like before. The fund and hospital, they form a joint venture. Instead of leasing it, they're both together, and then they renovate the hospital wing, and then the joint, you know, qualified opportunity zone business operates the building and the new services, and they can lease out space, and they essentially, you know, manage it together. And then after 10 years, the fund would essentially, 10 to 15, it doesn't matter, it depends on what the contract is discussed, they sell their stake, and then the hospital essentially goes on as before. And then scenario three is a little different. Scenario three, the hospital, and this is what a lot of people are doing in the, as far as, in the real estate, essentially, industry, hospital sells the old wing to the fund, and then they, essentially, before they sign it over, like a special uses clause, so they can't just like turn it into something like a car dealership, or, you know, that has to be for a specific use, the fund creates a QOZB with another developer, not the hospital, and then they renovate and develop an old wing, you know, restaurant, hotel, services that the hospital approves of, that could benefit them. And then essentially, the fund would sell their stake in this other entity after 10 years. Next slide, please. So at Principal Road Investments, we essentially represent companies that are looking to take advantage of this program. And, you know, we talked to Gary and Rhonda and a few other people, and, you know, we'd be willing to, or we'd be happy to work with Memorial and Juniper to develop a business plan, essentially going after, you know, qualified opportunity funds and using this as a way to, you know, bring investors and help the hospital. Any questions? It is, it's, it is confusing, and there's a lot more that I could get into, but that's essentially the basics. It's a different vehicle to raise money.
Essentially, the benefit for any investor is the tax, you get the tax benefit is the primary thing, and then I guess when they resell their stake, are they going to make money off the value depreciation?
They do. That's, that's, so they're looking at a, as a business opportunity, and the business is looking, because the business essentially doesn't have to provide the benefit, that has to be obviously a good investment. But the, the federal government is really giving them the benefit. And then the, obviously, after 10 years, and you have different types of investors. You have investors that are looking for startups, because that's, because they're essentially funding, you know, a million dollars could turn into $40 million after 10. But then there's people that just want their tax benefits, and so they're looking for real estate, more stable. They're not going to, it's not going to provide 10x, 20x. Yes, sir?
I think some of you are thinking, well, what are the things? We're probably not going to put a hotel in, but it would be services like, consider a SNF, Skilled Nursing Facility, or a SuperSNF, or an LTAC, a long-term acute care. We've talked about Geralt Psych. So there's a lot of things that we can put in, in different programs that would apply directly to us, and I think it would also help that, because of our people that we serve and all, that they don't have to go to different places, that this program is right here in the hospital. Maybe there's three different programs in the hospital, so that they're not out there trying to go different places, and we can help them. So I think it's, it's a creative way, it's, it's an opportunity, and, you know, I chaired the economic development, and they, they brought that, so it's open to anybody in, in that zone. We just happen to be in the zone, so maybe this would be a blessing, but we think that, and whatever suitor that we work with as we move forward, we would work with that suitor to make sure that that's something they're interested in also.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that information. Something worthwhile to think about. Our fiscal year 2020 operating and capital budget hearing. Rhonda?
Thank you. We did give notice of the budget hearing on June 11th, which did meet all the public hearing requirements for us. So, got to get, got to get myself organized here first. First, I'm going to go over our budgeted volumes and statistics. And what I have up on the screen are the most common statistics and budgets, or the biggest drivers in the organization. So what we did is, if you look, what I put on here is a little bit more information than you're used to seeing, but I thought it was quite interesting. I put in here budgeted 2020, our estimated 19, actual 18, and actual 17. Because what I wanted to show you was, for the budget, for the admissions, we budgeted 3,976. I believe we'll probably end the year at 3,779, which is 197. I believe we'll probably end the year at 3,779, which is 197 less than where we were in 18. And if you look at FY '17, we were at 4,527. So we dropped 551 admissions from 17 to 18, 197 admissions from 18 to 19. And what I am budgeting throughout this whole entire presentation is that we get back to 19, I mean to 18 volumes. So that's kind of, kind of be the message throughout this whole thing. And, and really, this budget is very aggressive. And the only way that we will have a chance at succeeding and hitting this budget is if we can hit these volumes. We have cut so many costs out of this organization. We have got to start driving top line revenue. So you'll see that all throughout. And I don't think it's going to be that big of a stretch. We were there a year ago and we were even higher two years ago. And I understand that we probably lost some confidence in the community, but my, my plea tonight to hit this budget is that the citizens of Nacogdoches and the citizens of Nacogdoches County come back to this hospital because I have to have it to get close to the numbers that I'm projecting. So when you look at, at total days, that's just a derivative of our average length of stay. Our average length of stay, there was an error in this report, it's actually, I'm budgeting to be at 4.79 and we were, we're going to be at 4.77, so that number remains relatively flat. Surgeries, I'm budgeting 2,482. That's an increase of where we're going to end up at 19. We're going to end up at 2,279. But that is attributable to Dr. Suits. He already last month was doing, averaging 17 cases a month and so I budget him at 17. I think that's pretty conservative. I think he'll do a lot more than that. At births, I budgeted 702. I'm estimating to be 695. I did not increase that number or get that to actual 18 because Dr. Schaus left in December and we have not, we don't have a replacement for her yet. Emergency visits, we got back to 18 numbers. MRI, cath lab procedures as well. GI procedures, I'm budgeting a little bit more at 781. Again, that's primarily because of Dr. Suits. And Dr. Jones is doing a lot more procedures this year than he'd be doing in the past. So I feel pretty comfortable with these statistics that we've presented as, I'm just going to let you guys ask questions as kind of I go through the page. Does anybody have any questions? And this is a public hearing, so if any of the audience members has questions, I'd be happy to, to address those also. All right. I'm going to jump now and do this a little bit different. We're going to talk about those statistics and how it drives our income statement, but first I thought it would be important to look at our capital budget and talk a little bit about that. We, we ask all of our department directors and managers to present a capital budget and what their needs were. And as you know, CapEx, we have not been able to invest a lot of capital expenditure during the organization in the past several years. So our needs are many and this is really kind of bare bones. So just we, I broke it out by department, it's really small and you can't see it. A couple of things I want to point out because I'll be talking about them a little bit later in the board meeting are, in surgery, there's a system eight saw set for $71,000 and a system eight mini driver for $51,000. I just want to point those out because we're going to be talking about those sooner than later in the budget. But when you go through the whole list and it is, it is many, and most of these items, interestingly enough, they're not for new revenue, they're not for new service lines, they are just to replace our current equipment and what we have. I mean, if you can look on that, one of the very first things, we've got 427,000 for beds in the ICU. So unfortunately, as a CFO, I'm going to spend about half of the money that I'm going to spend on capital on revenue generating capital. And we're, we just don't have that luxury because we're replacing a lot of, a lot of capital needs. So when you look at the whole list, we got down to, we're about 4.9 million is the entire list for this year. And I, I would suspect an organization this size to really continue to replace and, and add new, we should be at somewhere between 5 million to 7.5 million. And we just unfortunately don't have the luxury for that. So what we budgeted and what I put in our operating budget was a $2 million bucket that we will be used very strategically and no capital item is spent unless it comes to the board for approval, but it will be spent on items that have to be replaced. And we just, at this point in the game, we don't have luxury to do anything other than that. But there is $2 million in there, in our, in our budget.
That differs from last year, Rhonda, when we did this because we suggested that the budget last year, we would only fix things if they broke. So we had no forward-looking-
We didn't, we didn't put any, yeah, last year we did not put anything at all in the budget, but we did put-
If it broke, we fixed it out of-
Kind of a bucket. And, and hopefully, and we'll, we'll take that same approach, that unless it breaks or we won't, we, we, we won't use it. But I did go ahead to see how it would fit into the operation side if I, if I put that in there.
And that's, this is the first year that we've actually decided to-
Yeah, it's, it's a little aggressive.
Considering if we had the, if it breaks, we fix it budget.
But, but we have had, and you'll see a little bit further online, I mean, when our equipment breaks, it's, it's very expensive. And so it's easily $100,000 unfortunately. So, so anyway, that's, that's what we're doing this year. So when you look at what, what those statistics do and what this capital budget does to, to the, to the projected revenue, you can see the, the revenue, the deductions, total net revenue, we're a little bit higher than where we were. And, and if you look at where the inpatient, we, we put most of our growth and we, in, in some of those areas on, on the outpatient revenue, which you get a little, reimbursed a little bit higher. So, so overall, we're anticipating total net revenue of 80 million. This year, we're projected to be at 76 million. And then when you draw that down and look at your expenses, and I'll point out some of the items on the expenses where we had some changes. Salary and wages are, are up almost 5.6%. This is not, I did not budget a significant raises or anything. What's really driving the majority of this is volume. So more volume and that's, that's driving the salary increase. Professional fees are down a little bit. We do not have our intermedics contract and that was our billing company for, for our clinic. We do not have them, we do not have, and so that, actually, it's $29,000 less, but we also took, added in some expenses for Juniper and for some of our, working with some of our partners. So that kind of washed out, but there was some movement in that area. We moved Dr. Moriara and Hairston's lease expense from lease and rent, so that helped that number. And then we moved, in other purchase services, we moved MAD Data, which is another billing company. And we also have had a significant amount of contract labor this year. We're averaging, it's high, about 100,000, Gary, month is about where we were right now. So we just hired 14 RNs and so they're doing some training, so we're hoping to cut that contract labor down and move those dollars up to, out of purchase services and up to salary and wages. So this is, this is an aggressive budget. So operating margin, we're looking at this year, I think we'll end up with a loss somewhere around 2.1 million. And I'm projecting a budgeted loss next year of 27,000. Again, the only way we will come close to hitting this number is if we have lots and lots of volume through this hospital.
I would push back a little bit slightly with that. I think what would get us to this budget is just doing what we did two years ago. Literally having the community show up like they did two years ago. Not in the 90s, during the heyday, whatever. Just the community showing up in the same way, in the same fashion they did two years ago.
Thank you, that's a valid point. It's not that big of a stretch.
And this is a budget that shows it is makeable?
I believe it is.
And Rhonda, as a point of history, as a point of history, your projected budget last year, what was your net loss? What was your loss last year?
I projected that we would lose $10 million last year.
And we're at 2.1.
And we're at 2.1. And half of that is out of expenses. We had a lot of savings, a lot of savings out of expenses. And some of it, the other portion was in net revenue because our, our governmental money was, was better this year than when it was last year.
Yeah, we, from a 10 to a 2, still a loss, but it's definitely not what we had projected for last year at this time.
No, we-
And to go to projecting 27,000 next year.
If we meet these targets, if we meet these targets.
If we meet it.
Or, excuse me, when we meet these targets.
There you go, there you go. That's the attitude right there. We can absolutely, we-
And to put a finer point on it too, if we have the patients show up they did three years ago, we are fully in the black.
That is a valid point, thank you. That is true. I mean, if we, if we could get to 2017 numbers, which we were there. I mean, this is factual, this is where we were at. We would actually, we're, we would have the money that we need. We're closing, we're closing the gap on an operating on a monthly, on a monthly. We, we have the cash flow to sustain us. Where we need the money and where we need this is to put it in CapEx. We need to keep updating this facility and the only way we're doing it is if we have excess money beyond what we need to do operations so that we can put money back into the organization. So we need, we need, thank you, Dr. Head, we need the volumes that we had two years ago. So, and then finally, there's a requirement for the district that we list all of the outstanding obligations of the district and I have those up there. So our total, they're broken out by accounts payable is a little over 16 million. The accrued expense payable is 11.9 million. Other current liabilities, 782,000. Current portion of long-term debt is 2.6 million. Long-term debt net of current portion is 66 million and that's our bonds. And then other liabilities are 2.4 million. And these numbers were as of May. We had cash on hand to the credit of each district fund was 5.4 million. And money received by the district from all sources during the previous year were 75.5 million. And the money available that we believe is going to be available this, next year is 76.1. And then B.5 and B.6 are referenced in the detailed income statement that I presented. And B.7 says the estimated tax rate required and, well, I wish I could do that. So, anyway, those are the requirements of the district.
And Rhonda, the long-term debt net of current portion was, represents our bonds, which we really don't even, don't, don't affect us in as much that the sales tax revenue goes to the trustee. The trustee immediately pays the amount doable every month. The residual comes to us as part of our energy care.
That is correct.
So it doesn't really come as a drag on our bottom line, only in the fact that it affects us for our energy care pay. But otherwise, the payments are made consistently through that sales tax revenue throughout the year going forward. So that's not something that we have to find money for in our current budget.
No.
Because that sort of takes care of itself. It has to show up here.
It does show up here, yes. And that is, that's a valid point. And it's, it's a, it's a nice, it's good that it goes directly through that because that way we meet all the requirements of the bond and we don't have to worry about any of that stuff. It's, it's an automatic-
And you never write a check for that? Somebody else does?
No. We never write a check for that.
Super.
So, are there any questions that I could address on the budget?
Any questions or comments from the audience at all? This is a public hearing.
I thought this was an outstanding presentation, especially that you mentioned that you can't talk about it.
Microphone.
I think this was a very good presentation this year, where we're looking for the future. But also, one of the things that you mentioned that should be stressed, we never know what the government is on the IGT money exactly. It doesn't come regularly, which makes it very difficult to budget. And if everybody understands that we're not reimbursed the rate or the-
Mm-hmm.
But thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Can I, can I just interject real quick? You notice there's the EMS contingents here and it's for a good thing. We've, we've taken steps through our hospital and through Rhonda to change the way we bill, to change our billing services and put them more on a budget-friendly status where they can go forward and tell us how much they make and everything like that. And the numbers are promising. EMS, they have good numbers, they're promising numbers. You know, we looked at it before as a, as a service that we didn't maybe want to continue because of the numbers. And then we've given them these tools to go ahead and make progress on their own and essentially, you know, survive with what they do. And I think maybe July, after we get our budget done this month, we'll come and bring those numbers to the board and to the community to show the steps that we're taking as a hospital in order to empower one of the, you know, important community outreaches that we have in the EMS department. And I think for future, maybe next month, at some point, we'll have EMS be able to present us with some numbers. But you'll see some progress there as well. I mean, because that was something that we looked at before, last year's budget, and thought that was going to be something that was going to be affecting us. And I think it's going to be flipped around and it's going to be more of a positive than anything else.
I see it as being, especially after the discussions we've had. I see EMS as becoming a positive personally, which is something that they deserve credit for and needs to be emphasized.
Yeah, so maybe next month, guys, just because we're doing budget. But we would like to see them back and give an ex, have them give an explanation, Rhonda.
So, as aside from a budget, we talked about all the things we've cut, but all the things we've done to empower the departments within our control and give them some opportunity to, to, to show what they can do for us as well.
Yep. Great.
I think also there are a lot of things that this management team has, has, has done for our hospital. And we had a management company operating the hospital and they didn't even come close to being able to do the things that Rhonda and her team and Gary and his team and just this, all the managers, all of the departments in the hospital have been able to do is to be able to come to us with ideas to save money, to increase revenue, to actually manage much, much better. So we're saving money on that end too because we don't need a management company anymore. We have it in-house. And I want to make sure that everybody understands that it is due to administration and department managers and all of the people who work here in the hospital. It is really gratifying to walk through the hospital and see that someone is picking up a candy wrapper off of the floor or something, even though that's not their job. It's as if this hospital staff has finally become exactly what we need it to be. And I could not be prouder of what Rhonda and Gary and everybody on this team have done. And every person here on the board can see it with the numbers. We've seen it month after month and we are just delighted with what has been accomplished this past year and looking forward to those same types of accomplishments next year.
Outstanding.
Very kind, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I offer a motion that we accept this budget proposal?
Yes, you certainly may.
Second. Ooh.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept this budget as prepared by Rhonda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The budget is accepted. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay. Action, yeah, back to regular business.
I'm just going to stay up here.
Okay.
For a little bit.
Yeah, you might as well. Action and purchase request, the BKD engagement letter for 2019.
Yeah, this is, every, every year we are presented with an engagement letter with BKD. They are financial auditors and the estimated fee for the audit this year is 55,000 and then 5,000 for tax preparation. They will be here the third week of August. They'll be here for about two weeks and we're hoping we will present to the board in October the results of the audit. And, and, and I can't even say, Lynn is back there. And for those of you who don't know Lynn, Lynn is our, is over our accounting department and she has done a phenomenal job on, we've already had auditors out to do pre-work for two days in the midst of wrapping up the budget. And if you noticed in your financial packet, the presentation looks a little bit different because we're trying to start doing all of our reports in-house and move away from CHM. And so, thank you Lynn for all your hard work. As, as a side note, great job. Anyway, so that's the BKD, sorry, got off track a little bit.
That's okay.
The BKD engagement letter.
Okay. We've all had a chance to- Okay, we've all had a chance to review that. Do I have a motion?
I move, we accept the contract.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion carries, thank you very much. Okay, result of operations.
All right, let's talk about May. Here we go. In May, we had admissions of three-hundred-and-ten, resulting in one-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-eight patient days. We had a twenty-six rehab admissions, and that's the budgeted number that we have for rehab, although last month they were at thirty-two. Fifty-three births, GI procedures were ninety-four compared to ninety-one, and cath lab procedures were down, we were at sixty-four. Last month, we had one-hundred-and-eighteen, and ER visits, two-thousand-and-twenty-five compared to two-thousand-and-forty-one last month. So, not a bad volume month for May. I will warn you that June is not good at all. Our volumes for June are very, very low. So, we'll enjoy this presentation, because next month it won't be this good. Our average length of stay, it's, it's showing it here that's at five, but we went back and looked at the reports, and actually, our average length of stay was closer to four-point-nine, so it has trended up just a little bit, but we're still working every day to kind of get those adjusted. Our case mix index, which shows the acuity of our hospital, of our patients, it was down a little bit, the red line is Medicare, so we were a little bit below one-point-four for our case mix index for the month. When you look at days unbilled, that's up at seven, it's a little bit higher than where we'd like to see that, but we have several accounts in there that we're still working on that were larger accounts that just haven't draw, had not dropped at the end of the month. So, we're working on that, and to get, to get that number down. When you look at patient collections, we had four-point-million in patient collections for the month. It's a little bit lower than where we had seen it, but we're collecting on March revenue, and so March was a little bit lighter revenue month than we'd seen historically. So, although that's lower than where we were for March and April, I'm still, it's still good, we'll, we'll take, we'll take that. And remember, in April and May, there were no IGT, so that is straight patient, patient collections. When you look at our gross revenue for the month, we were at twenty-four-point-four, and like I said, it's not off much, but when you look at March, it was twenty-four-point-three, it was a little bit slower, lighter than we had, we had been seeing. And net revenue for the month, we're at five-point-five million. This is the crazy thing about the month, and this was, this is, this was kind of where we had, where we had some issues. When you look at our expenses every month, we total expenses are somewhere between, they hover right around six-point-seven, six-point-six last month. For May, we dropped, we bumped up to seven-point-four million. So, we had a huge increase in expenses for the month. Revenues were the same, volumes were good, revenues were good, huge increase in expense. So, when you drill down to see what it was, it was all in the supply expense. So, we typically, eight-hundred to nine-hundred thousand for supply expense, and we popped up to one-point-four million. So, what is going on there is May is the month, Sylvia, that we do inventory adjustment, and Sylvia, I'm not saying it's your fault. But we do inventory in May, and so we had about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar adjustment for inventory. We saw in there, we had done some upgrades to our system, and we realized that some of our expenses for May were really April expenses. They should have hit in April, and they didn't. And in surgery, we had about a hundred-and-six-thousand dollars of expenses that were really April. We did a system upgrade with Cerner, and I think that we've corrected that system, we didn't even realize it was going on, but they weren't hitting in the correct month. So, two-hundred thousand for inventory, a hundred thousand in surgery that hit in the wrong month. We saw a hundred, there was a hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-dollar error that will be corrected next month. And then we had two Impellas, and Farah, don't ask me what those are. They were twenty-five thousand apiece, there are some cardiology stuff that were expensive, and we typically don't do those, and we had two in the month.
You got cheaper than my Impella.
Maybe. So, we had just a lot of expenses, supply expenses. Again, we'll, we'll get back, our managers and Sylvia are very diligent about working and, and being held accountable to their supply expense. We will get back down to our trend, so, but that's, that's kind of where we were, that's what happened to us in May. So, what it did to our bottom line is it caused us to have an operating loss of a million dollars, because we were, we were five-hundred-thousand dollars higher than we should have been in supply expense. Now, that is not so exciting, but the good news really still, when you look here today at where we are, we're at an operating margin loss of two-point-four million compared to ten-point-six last year. So, and we will have, we know we will have some adjustments at the end of June, several adjustments, we'll, through June, we have some, we have some settlements that we got throughout the year that have not been booked, that we'll book in June. June, we're getting a really big IGT, net a little over two-point-three maybe. So, we'll have some really positive things, and then we'll have some adjustments also. So, I anticipate we'll end up somewhere close to staying pretty neutral at two-point-four through the end of June, so.
Does everybody here understand IGT?
I think everybody, I hope everybody understands IGT, we talk a lot about it a lot, but it's our intergovernmental money, that our government, it's called intergovernmental transfer, and it's the money that we get, there are four or five programs where we get money from the government. And I haven't figured it out yet, how they decide to pay it or when they, we usually get a notice about, about thirty days before it's due, saying this is what you have to put in, and this, this month in June, they actually, they told us what we needed to put in and what we were going to get, and then about midway through the month, they said, oh, put in another three-hundred thousand, and you'll get seven-hundred-and-fifty more. So, we did, and so we just, we just never know. But we're very thankful that we have a line of credit that can cover that IGT for us. That helps, that makes a very big difference for us financially. So, do you all have any questions about our monthly results of operations?
No? Okay, do I have a motion then?
I'll make the motion. Can we accept the motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the results of operations as presented by Rhonda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion carries, thank you. Okay, Noella, compliance report.
So, I've heard from the federal government regarding our year-three CIA report, and they've requested a little additional information. It's due by next Tuesday, so that's what I'm working on currently, and I thank everybody that I've reached out to for information, because it's coming together well. The only other thing I have to discuss in open is about two weeks ago, many of you, if not all of you, are aware, that we had an employee data situation where some information was sent out inadvertently to a former employee, who we are one-hundred percent certain that that information was contained and destroyed. So, we did put out the notices to the employees, we spoke with the employees, we've given them their options as far as monitoring their credit if they so choose to do so, and I've had a couple people ask questions. We've asked department heads, you know, how things going on their units, how are staff feeling, are they having any conversations about this? For the most part, we're getting no, but we're still here and available for anyone who has questions or want to ask questions about that. I actually had someone stop by today to talk about it, and I think she left very reassured of what she wanted to do regarding this situation. So, we have implemented a corrective action plan, every step of that corrective action has been implemented at this time, and we will continue to monitor just to make sure we don't have this situation occur again. So, the biggest thing was for us was to apologize to the staff for this occurring, and to help assure them that we are taking steps to make sure that this does not happen again.
Okay, thank you.
Someone wants to motion to take the rest of mine?
Okay, we need, Farah made the motion to take the second half of Noella's report into closed session. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion carries, and the second half of the report will go into closed session.
Mm-hmm, I know, you can't get enough of me tonight.
Okay, Rhonda is up again for the capital purchase and improvement for Stryker Instruments System Eight.
We'll see if Dr., if you still have enough money to push this through, right? So, I'm teasing. I'm teasing, I'm teasing, I'm teasing Noella. But this is, this, oh, this is some Stryker instruments, I, when I, we're talking, going through the capital budget list, I mentioned that we had, that the power set eight was on the list. And so, this is, recently, the surgery department had issues with a System Six power set, the particular tools are used in ninety to ninety-five percent of orthopedic cases, including trauma, and the batteries are not holding a charge anymore, and the handpiece to the saw is heating up during use, the handpiece to the drill is making a metal, metal, metal-on-metal grounding, grinding sound. And so, the system is obsolete, we can't get any more parts for the system, and there is our surgery department back there. So, we're requesting two sets and a service agreement. These guys have to have this.
I would, speaking as someone who works in surgery, I'd like to just comment that this system is absolutely essential if you want the operating room to keep running. We do a huge amount of orthopedic surgery down there, notwithstanding our chief medical officer is in fact an orthopedic surgeon. But I highly recommend we spring for the system, because I've actually had some conversations with the competitor system, and the competitor system says buy this system, and I'm not going to say who that is, but.
Why don't you make the motion?
So, I'm going to move that we purchase System Eight.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to purchase the, the system as well as the service contract, correct?
Yes, that is what I am proposing.
Okay, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion carries, and they will get the equipment they need.
Great, thank you. The next item I have, can I just go on?
Mm-hmm.
Is the Crothol service agreement. We currently had been, we have been using GE for our biomedical and imaging contract since I believe twenty-fourteen, maybe sooner than that. They quit servicing us in March of this year, and we have gone without service until, unless we beg and plead and our own guys try to fix it since then. We did a bid, Michelle and her, Michelle did a bid for this, and so, this is a really big deal. We have over two-thousand pieces of equipment in this hospital that we have to maintain and, and do. So, we did, did out a bid, we got a bid back from Crothol, and it includes, like I said, it also is inclusive of a, of a Canon CT scanner that was not originally on the contract that GE covered, so this is all-inclusive, and it is, Crothol gave us a bid of eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand, Philips gave us a bid of one-point-one million. Crothol will actually have a manager and a tech onsite to help us. When we were with GE, we only had a tech onsite. So, we have met with these, with this company, I think they're going to provide us great service. They have been providing a service, because they're actually the company that services Medical Center, and they have been providing a service since GE walked out. So, we feel very confident going with them, and so I would request that the board approve this agreement with Crothol.
Do I have a motion? Farah?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Crothol service agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion carries, thank you, Rhonda.
And my final item of the evening is our transcription company. We, again, had been using a company called Immortal for well over fifteen years. In January, Immortal got sold out to, they got purchased by, I can't remember who, Three-M, they got purchased by Three-M. So, they became a really big company, and they asked us to send all of our transcription overseas, and so we did, and then it affected our, the international platform that they put us on affected our turnaround times, it affected the quality, and I actually, by doing that, got a lot of physicians very upset with me. So, we did a bid, and a local company called Nakadocha's Transcription Solutions has, has the bid, and we would like to transit, you know, move our services to them, the turnaround times are better, and the cost is the same. So, I would ask the board to approve this contract with them.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept the Nakadocha's transcription services agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same?
I'm going to abstain. I know the family too well, they're a great family, I just feel like I know them in a way that I need to abstain in this contract.
Okay.
I'll vote for Sean, yes, yes, twice, yes.
Okay, thank you for letting us know and for abstaining, but the motion carries.
Thank you.
Christine.
Okay, this is the Roche and Compass contract. Roche is the company that provides our glucometer equipment, that's to check blood sugars for our patients that are diabetics and just our patients in general. They provide the machines, the strips, and everything that goes with it. Ralls is the company that has the software component that links our glucometer devices. So, it's basically been two contracts, we're trying to put them together in one contract. Roche is going to purchase the Rall's system for us for the price of the, but the price of the glucometer agents will go up by nine-ninety-five a box. So, the current contract, we already have one year under our belt, we have two more years, so this new proposed contract will be in effect for them remainder of the two years. Basically, we're simplifying, making it one contract instead of two, and essentially, Roche is going to take on the Ralls service for us, so. I'm trying to keep it simple, because it gets kind of complicated.
Okay, well, we've had all the paperwork prior, so, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Roche and Compass amendment, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion carries, thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Okay, Xerox services agreement, James Turner.
Lots of hard questions on this one. If you look at the document in front of you, the spreadsheet, you'll see there's thirty-five items listed, we're going to remove four items, Xerox machines. If you look at midway at the bottom of the page, you'll see what we were paying, if you look at the bottom right corner, you'll see what the proposal is, and you'll see the, you know, projected savings.
What is that for the other folks, the projected savings?
The monthly difference compared to what we were paying is seven-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars, annual difference is eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars, difference over three years is twenty-six-thousand dollars.
And that's all off?
The percentage of savings is thirteen percent savings.
That's all off, just dropping machines, that's the plan, we're just dropping four machines, you said?
Well, we dropped four machines, we did add one machine, so it's only, you know, three machines, but the, the allowance is where we're cutting into the cost.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion that we accept the Xerox contract.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the, or approve the. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the, or approve the Xerox Services Agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. Motion carries. Thank you very much, James.
Thank you.
Now, is this because of the paperless society we're in?
Yes, yes, this is because it's paperless today.
Okay, the physics contract. The Texas Department of Health requires any equipment that emits radiation needs to be checked out by a compliance annually by a medical physicist. The law, state law mandates that these reports are on file at the facility. So we are proposing a contract renewal. This has been in place for a while now. With our current company, they service radiology, women's services, CAT scan, nuclear medicine, MRI, and the cath lab also. So the, it's invoiced, invoiced quarterly at 69, 13.88, and then it costs 27,655 per year. They come out several times during the year. Any new equipment, we don't anticipate any new things like a new cath lab or new, but they do have to come out separately charged, and there's a fee service in that packet. So we need to approve that.
We don't get paid if we don't have these certs either. If we don't have certified equipment, we don't get paid.
That's correct.
If you don't get this done, you don't get a paycheck, or you don't get a paycheck for anything.
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion.
Second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the imaging physics radiation safety. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. Thank you. And you're still up.
Okay, MCG is, it's a company called Milliman. They are the company that the case managers and medical necessity nurses, it, they call this number, they put data into the system, and it tells whether the patient should be in, inpatient, obs, or outpatient. It also helps them with care guidelines, moving them through the continuum through our hospital. If there's a readmission, it kind of triggers that, it helps us with avoidable days. There are several things that this program helps us with, the case managers use it. It is a one-year contract. It is 37,464 and 19 cents, and we need a motion to approve that. And we've had this contract since 2009.
Oh, okay, so it's renewed.
And it's satisfactory, I assume?
Yes, it, it works very well. It works very well.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the MCG license agreement. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same. Motion carries. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Okay, physician new call agreements. Gary?
Yes, we have three new call agreements, and those three, Rachel Head and Urology. Now, she has not approved this, but we need board approval for the contract. If she accepts it, we'll extend urology coverage. If she doesn't, then our urology coverage will remain the same. Dr. Juris, he used to take call full-time, he's just kind of helping us out. He's more on the, with the other hospital, but, so he's returned just as PRN, so he'll fill in when he can, with his colleagues when, when he needs to. And then Dr. Brent Shirley is a, a new Dennis MD in town, and so he's willing to take calls, so those are the three new call agreements. If you want, I'll just move on to the renewal.
Let's, let's approve the new call agreements first.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve these physician new call agreements. Dr. Head, you probably won't be able to vote, but.
I was going to say, can we separate Rachel Head out so that way Dr. Head can vote on the other?
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion and amend it.
Make a motion on Rachel Head.
I'll second that.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to approve the new physician call agreement with Dr. Rachel Head. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same.
Don't look at me. I am standing, I'm standing, no. They just said all opposed, and they looked at me like.
No, I was looking for you to say you abstained.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Okay. Dr. Ryan Head abstained, but the motion carries anyway. Thank you. Okay, now you may.
All right, make a motion that we accept the new physician, physician new call agreements with Dr. Juris and Dr. Shirley. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept Dr. Juris and Dr. Shirley for new physician call agreements. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, the renewal call agreements.
Yes, this is a group of 13 physicians. They all currently have contracts, so it's simply renewal. The only change in this is the, the payment terms, where we've addressed that to move from 10 days payment when they turn the invoice in to 30 days, which is more customary for those type of contracts. So I would submit that for your approval.
Okay, and Dr. Ryan Head will have to abstain.
Yeah. Again, for my.
If I could ask, Rhonda, how much are we paying in call pay now? Do you remember what it, what it balances out to be?
It's about $160,000 a month.
So $160,000 a month for the physicians to come in and take call and take care of our patients, just so the public knows. Just saying. We need the volume, so bring the patients to us, please.
Ah, there's your cell.
Request your physician to come and send you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'd make the motion as to 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, leaving out Dr. Head. I'd make the motion as to all of those except for Dr. Head.
Okay.
Second.
All right, it's been approved, or moved and seconded that all the physician renewal call agreements, with the exception of number three, Dr. Head, be approved. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same.
They cut you out. Did you lose a bet?
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
I'll move that we.
We will.
Did you lose a bet?
I move that we accept the call agreement for Dr. Head.
I'll second.
Okay, is there a second?
There is, Lisa.
Oh, sorry, didn't hear that.
No, we're going faster here.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the renewal call agreement for Dr. Ryan Head, and Dr. Head will abstain from the vote. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
You have the hospital foundation.
Okay, retirement training. Patrick.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so I know you guys love training, especially when it involves pension plans. So we are required by the state of Texas as the seven decision-makers or the doors, whatever you want to call us, to undergo several hours, and I'm thinking seven hours of training.
Seven.
So I think via email, we'll try to get a schedule, a calendar together that's agreeable for everybody, and have an opportunity to watch it, and, you know, enjoy each other's company while we watch seven hours of training hours. So I'm just letting you know, that's coming up, it's, it's on deck, it's going to go to play here pretty soon, so expect relatively quickly an opportunity for you guys to continue or to initially get your training as required by the Pension Review Board of the state of Texas.
When are we planning to do this?
We'll send emails out, and we can, you know, catch a, you know.
Make sure you're in town.
It gets cold a little bit.
No, you have to do it as a decision-maker required by the state of Texas. We just found this out, I think, last month or the month before, and we determined that the decision-makers, which are us, the board members, have to take this training.
Now, do we sit together and do it?
You'd sit by yourself if you want to.
I mean, no, is it a group, is we get together to watch this?
It's whatever your pleasure is.
It's board education, so.
So we can make it as agreeable as possible. Well, and it doesn't have to be in a formal setting, it's just board education, so just make sure that you're aware that something's coming up, that we need to. We've talked about trying to break it down, maybe two-hour segments. Yeah, two-hour segments, five days a week for the next coming month. It's not onerous, but it's, it's pension, it's pension stuff, riveting stuff.
Mm-hmm, yes.
The saga of the pension plans. So anyways, we have to, we have to partake in that and get our certification as a board in total. All right?
Okay. Thank you very much, Patrick, appreciate that. Executive Administrative Report, Gary?
Probably the biggest thing is the suitors and the update. We're, we're continuing to work with Juniper, and Diakma is assisting also. We have 10 o'clock Thursday morning calls every week. At this point, we have had three site visits here on the facility. One suitor has declined, one is still considering, and the third is interested in pursuing the details. So we'll work with them and work with both of those two. Juniper's also said they're circling back, there's some unique circumstance around several that are interested, but they can't participate at this time, so there might be a couple more that would come out for site visits. So it's kind of what they had suggested. Hopefully by fall, we'll get this thing down. At this point, we have one, but we think there might be another one or two that will show up, those bids, are they present, I mean, they're, they're quotes, what they're putting on, then we work out the details, present that to the board. Hopefully, like I said, we're looking at this fall, and we do have one in hand at this point, so I think that's, that's certainly positive. And that's it for my report this, this month.
The calendar?
Yes, calendar in July. I seem to overlook that one. I would submit this to the board subcommittee meetings during the month.
Yeah, I have one change. I've conferred with my email, and I think there was a typographical error. The retirement committee, which is actually, these individuals right here to my right and left, is scheduled for July 2nd, not July 9th. I think that's where we had an issue.
Second.
Still 10 o'clock?
Uh, yes, sir.
We'll move that up. Farah, you're going to have to come to these things.
Any other comments, questions?
Send you emails.
Okay, and now we will adjourn into executive session. Legal counsel regarding pending or contemplated litigation under Texas Government Code 551.071, deliberate the appointment, employment, and duties of an employee under Texas Government Code 551.074, and deliberation of the provision of healthcare services under Texas Government Code 551.085. Open session is now adjourned into closed session. Thank you very much.